Let us start.
Okay, all set?
Great. Well, I want to welcome everyone to the December 6, 2023, meeting of the Open Space Board of Trustees. And just a quick word about the timing of the meeting. We rescheduled the meeting to the first Wednesday in December, so it would not conflict with the celebration of Hanukkah. And so we appreciate everyone's accommodation for the change in time and date. Well, date, actually. So, welcome. I'm going to call the roll. Harmon?
Right here.
Michelle?
Here.
John?
President.
And I am here as well. Oh, Brady. Oh, good for you.
Here.
It's good seeing you. So, we have a unanimous board and we appreciate everyone's participation. Three of us are here in person and two board members will be participating virtually. So, the first item on business will be.
Sam.
Will be.
If Sam could go through the rules. Pibrad meeting.
Okay. We will go through the rules of the virtual participation.
Thank you. So, the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit this link. And the following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. And then, when you are, if you would like to speak and you would like to, for me to call on you to speak, you'll use the raise hand function, so you'll either see an icon on the bottom that says raise hand, or you'll need to click on the icon that says participants, the three dots on the bottom right, and then you'll see an option to click raise hand. We don't have anyone joining by phone right now, so I'll go over that if we do have someone joining by phone. But with that, I will stop sharing my screen and we'll be done there.
Great. Thank you for that. Our first item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes of the November 8, 2023 Open Space Board of Trustees meeting. Does anyone have any comments or edits on page one of the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Leah, I have one. I think there is a duplication of one of the public comments. Robert Murphy is shown twice, so we can. Delete one of those, that'd be great, because he only did speak once. Seeing none, page two. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
It was moved by Michelle and seconded by Harmon. I'll call the roll for the vote. Harmon?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brady? Brady, can you hear us? One more time. Brady? Can you, can you hear us? Okay. And I approve as well, so it passed four and one abstention. Four to four and to one abstention. So, the next item on the agenda is public comment for items not identified for public hearing. We have one item that is identified on the agenda for public hearing. It's a public hearing in consideration of a staff recommendation to the Open Space Board on assigning management area designations to specific open space and mountain parks properties that are without a designation. So, if you do have any comments that you'd like to convey to the board on that topic, please wait until that item is up for consideration, and we will entertain any other public comments that people wish to give. And Sam, would you coordinate that?
Yes. So, if you would like to speak during this public hearing portion, please raise your hand, and I can unmute you or allow you to unmute yourself. And I am not seeing any hands.
Okay. Since we do not have any hands, I will close the public comment for this meeting, and we'll move on to matters from the board. The first one would be any comments on the written information that was provided in the packet. And so, the first one was the Gibhart Integrated Site Project. Does anyone have any comments or thoughts on that? Seeing and hearing none, I will simply say I'm glad it's moving ahead, and we're looking forward to, you know, getting the project underway and completed. And I know there's some big-ticket project requirements, bridge across sample to creek and things, but it's good to like start moving on that. That's the important area, and we appreciate the focus on it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just chime in and say, you know, somebody uses the rec center over at East Boulder and knows that area pretty well. It's definitely a kind of a confusing patchwork of land ownership and management strategies through there. So, looking forward to hopefully seeing a more cohesive and environmentally improved area there. So, thanks for taking that on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. We'll look forward to further, since the project moves ahead. So, thanks. The second item for written information was the Fort Chambers Poor Farm Site Management Plan update. Does anyone have any comments or questions on that? Seeing and hearing none, I will also simply say that we're appreciative of the update. We're looking forward to the possibility that we'll be joined by some tribal representatives in March. So, that'll be good, and we're delighted to see the cooperation between the department and the tribal representatives on developing the site management plan. So, thanks for that.
I love the idea of changing the name, but, you know, telling the story about Fort Chambers. I think that was very inspired thought that went behind that.
Yeah, and I think another special aspect of this project will be the combination of the Fort Chambers site and the poor farm and kind of how all of that gets woven together and as far as interpretative efforts for that particular property. So, we'll look forward to further conversations on that as well. Great. Well, the next item then will be the OS, the Open Space Board Retreat, follow-up on our rules of procedures. And I'm going to hand that conversation off to Michelle and Harmon, who have been working on getting the edits together and ready for our review and approval.
All right. Hey, Harmon, do you mind if I take a stab at this?
Yes, please go ahead.
Well, as you all know, Harmon and I were on the subcommittee to move along our rules of procedure. So, just for the public's sake, you know, the Open Space Board had its retreat in late September. We regularly, I guess annually, revisit our rules of procedure. And in September, we had some great conversations about the document, and we proposed some updates. Over the last month, the city attorney's office had a chance to review the document with our proposed changes, and the city attorney's office made some suggestions. I believe all of that body of work, our collective work, is represented in the markup, the markup document that was in our board packet. And today, our goal is to finalize the document and to vote and adopt the new rules of procedure as I know it. And so.
Michelle, could I interrupt just for a second? And the draft has both red and blue edits. Can you, are the blue edits the city attorney's? Can you run through the difference between the red and the blue edits?
Yeah, I'll let Leah do that, since she's not colorblind.
Yeah, I forgot. Yeah, sorry.
As far as this discussion goes, it was just, it should have all been one color. It changes color based on who's editing at the time.
Okay.
So, it doesn't indicate city attorney's office, staff, or board. The document as a whole does reflect all the changes as they are currently, both from what was made at the last meeting, what city attorney's office did in the interim, and then what we're hoping that would be adopted tonight. So, yeah, sorry.
Thank you. That helps.
So, I think the answer to that is like the red is our cumulative board changes, and the blue is the last round of attorney's changes. At least as this last go-around. Right? Is that what you're saying, Leah?
I'm not positive that's right. Let me, let me share it, Michelle, and I might know from looking, but I think it's.
It's close to a good line of demarcation, but there may have been some board input in some of the blue as well, because we talked with the city attorney's office and the staff. But I think all the red stuff is stuff we, we had presented to. I'm not sure, Leah, but I, as I look through it in answering, trying to get it what Dave's asking, seems like the red stuff is mostly what the board had already seen.
Okay.
I think that's what you really want to know, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Do you want to walk us through page by page, or how would you like to?
Yeah, let's go, let's go page by page. I actually think this is going to go pretty quickly. You know, our initial part of this exercise was to clean up some of the language in here so that it referenced, you know, rules that were written elsewhere, and there was no potential for contradiction. So, that's where you'll see some of these, a lot of our changes. And then some of them were, you know, I think substantive, and that's where we had that healthy debate and discussion. So, but let's start with page one, and I'll just open it up, because you all have access to that in digital and probably print form, and to see if we have any questions, comments, or suggestions.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, or suggestions on page one?
I do.
Okay.
So, and I sent an email earlier this week, or last week, about this to OSBT, or at least to Leah. There's in Article Two, Officers Five, at the bottom of the page, just a little mistake was made where it says secretary shall be responsible for and maintaining the records. I think it used to read shall be responsible for and maintain the records of the board. Now, either we need to go back to the original language or just delete the "and", so it says the secretary shall be responsible for maintaining the records. So, I think the board should just choose, do you want to leave it as it is? Or just say, the secretary shall be responsible for maintaining, and take out that "and".
I think that sounds fine.
Just take out the "and"?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, that's what we all thought too. So, I think that's fine.
Great, great. And I have a question, and Dan, you may actually be the person to respond to this. I had a question in paragraph four, where we're talking about the vice chair and the transition of the vice chair position. So, in that, that second line, it says we'll be included in the agenda-setting meeting as an observer. I am wondering, do we need the language as an observer? My preference would be just to, would be included in the agenda-setting meeting. Yeah. And because I see, you know, if the attendees of the meeting are all able to participate, and so.
No problem with that.
Great. Can we then delete as an observer?
I'm in favor of that.
Great. You okay with that, John?
I'm okay with that.
Great.
That looks good. And Leah, would you might, yeah, there you go, track those changes so we can track what you also, the original, the strike that you did earlier as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's a good catch, Dave. The only thing I will add is that on the, at least on that document, it was called number six, and just point out that it was moved to the agenda section. So, we'll, we'll get to see that language later. It's not that it was struck completely.
Dave, do you mind if I just go back? I don't, I really don't have a problem with it, but I think I have some context why as an observer was included.
Okay.
A couple of years ago. I think with the five-person board, the fact that 40% of the board would be present at this meeting, I think that there is discussion of there'd be risk of going beyond just agenda-setting and getting more into the discussions, you know, there'd be more risk of diving into the subject matter, nearly half the board present, or 40%. And so, I think that's why those words ended up being there. I think striking it, and if we end up having an issue with it, we can come back and say, hey, it's starting to be more like a board meeting here.
That sounds fine. Yeah. Great. Okay, Michelle, are you ready to?
Yeah, so let's keep, yeah, let's keep going. If there are no other comments on page two, let's go to page three. Anybody? And I'm sorry, I can't see you all, because you're all so small, and I can't see Brady. Is he back?
He is, but he has turned his video off, said he can remain connected.
Okay.
Michelle, just to, let me jump in. I think we're on page one. Now, we're on page two. Article two, page two.
We went through page two. She mentioned that consent agenda number six has just been moved. It really hasn't been struck.
Okay.
And then there's a little bit of legal language at the bottom in number eight, which we didn't address.
Okay.
So, we're on three.
My mistake. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. If we're all good with number two, page two, then we'll move on to number three.
Are there any questions or suggestions on page three? I have one. And Michelle, I apologize to you at the outset, and to you as well, Harmon. I still, despite what we talked about informally, have a problem with the language on nine C, as far as the chair references concerned. And so, here, here, my, I'm going to make a suggestion for language, but before I do that, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we can either presumably adopt or approve that tonight, or, and Dan and I talked about this a little previously, or we can just say that we'll continue to work on language for that particular section. So, I'm okay either way, but my suggestion is that I think the, the sentence that's included is fine, but I would like to suggest a sentence that proceeds that, that speaks more specifically to board meetings, and that, here is the, my language that I'm going to suggest. The chair will conduct the meeting in accordance with the city's procedures and policies so that there, there is a more specific reference to kind of meeting conduct that the city has, and it's basically what Sam, you know, read at the beginning of the meeting. But I think we ought to reference that, and then to say that the chair supports and upholds the city's vision, I think is fine as well.
Should we, is it the rules of decorum?
Rules of decorum.
Can I change it to the city's rules of decorum?
That would be fine. Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't sure we were using the word decorum, but if we are, that would be fine.
The only concern I have with that, Dave, is that that section is called public participation. And I think your sentence is talking about the conducted, you know, how the whole meeting is conducted.
Does it talk about officer duties?
Well, there is, in Article Three, meetings, we could move that sentence to a new paragraph in Article Three, and then it wouldn't seem like it's singling out public participation for decorum.
That would be fine. Yeah, good suggestion, Michelle and Harmon.
So, what if we just put it right in front of public participation in a new paragraph nine, and then made public participation paragraph 10?
Are people okay with that?
Does that make sense?
What did you want to title it? Sorry. Or just have the sentence Dave said as number nine?
Yeah, I think some of these, like, board field trips may be scheduled. They don't have any heading. So, it'd just be paragraph nine, and it would say the board shall conduct the meeting.
The chair.
Or, sorry, the chair shall conduct the meeting. I can't read it.
Chair will conduct the meeting in accordance with the city's rules of decorum.
Right, and then you just drop down to a whole paragraph with some paragraphs on public participation. That look good?
So, that public participation then would be 10.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Michelle, what do you think? Okay.
So, if that sounds good, we'll do that.
Okay, great, great suggestion.
So, Dan, from my written, from my piece of paper, that was the end of page three. And on to page four, questions, comments, suggestions. I really like that new bullet point four.
We'll see if we can get done before nine tonight.
And then the new number eight is where I said that section got moved about consent agenda. Okay, anything else on page four? Go to page five. I think there's just a couple, there's just one little or a couple of tweaks here. View or viewing. Okay, hearing, seeing, now feedback. We'll move on to, oh, that's it. Do, does somebody need to make a motion to, for us to vote and adopt this?
Yes, and I will entertain a motion to adopt the five rules of, rules of procedure for the Open Space Board of Trustees.
Motion that we.
I move that we adopt them. Jinx. Brady moves, and John seconds.
Oh, second, yeah.
Great. We'll do a roll call vote for this. Harmon?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so it's unanimous. Thank you all very much, especially Harmon and Michelle. Appreciate the work that you've done, and I think the rules of procedures have been improved and clarified, so that's great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Before we move on to our item for public hearing, I want to, I was just informed that there, there was a person that would like to make a public comment that we missed. So, let's circle back and, and open public comment again. And if there's any, if there are anyone, people that would like to make a comment, they can do so now.
Yes, unfortunately, the person who had their hand raised has signed off. I did tell them that it had closed, and before I had a chance to tell them that it was going to reopen, I believe they had signed off, but I do want to open it up to any other hands or anyone else who may want to speak. And I'm not seeing any new hands.
Okay. Well, thank you, and so we'll close public comment for the second time tonight. And sorry about that. So, I think we're ready to move on to the consideration of the staff recommendation on the assignment of management area designations to specific open space and mountain parks properties. And Dan?
Yeah, I'll just, a few quick, brief introductory comments before I turn things over to Casey. So, we talk a lot about sort of, all organizations do backlog, right? You know, trail maintenance backlog, water infrastructure backlog. Well, we actually have some backlog of like the more administrative matters of things that, for one reason or another, have accumulated that we need, you know, that we now need to address. And one of those things is the assignment of management area designations to properties that have been acquired since 2005, and a few that were missed during the 2005 assignments in the visitor master plan. So, you know, from a staff perspective, we're sort of, we treat any sort of backlog really seriously, and this is one of those administrative things that we were anxious to get to, to kind of cross it off the to-do list, if you will. So, to lead us through that, and you've been updated a couple of times writtenly on this item, but to guide us to a presentation, and then to ask for recommendation, and I'll start with Casey French.
Well, it's nice to be here tonight and see you all, Harmon. It's nice to meet you. For the presentation to come up. Perfect. So, I'm also here with Juliette Bonnell tonight, and as Dan said, we're talking about signing management area designations to properties that currently don't have one. And our presentation, I'm going to begin by zooming out a little bit, and I'm going to do an overview of management area designations, and it goes in the background. I'm going to go through the current status. I'm going to go through the related processes, and then I'm going to turn it over to Juliette, who's going to go through the specific MAD recommendations for properties. Oh. So, the visitor master plan first established our MADS in 2005, as Dan said. It established four designations, and also the landscape approach for applying them is shown here. So, the goal is to provide context and guidance on the management emphasis for areas. In terms of where MADS fit into our planning framework, they provide broad, system-wide and overarching guidance on the management emphasis. Again, they're found in the visitor master plan, which is a system-wide management plan. And so, both the master plan and our system-wide plans are used to inform and support site-specific planning, such as trail study areas or integrated site plans. And during those planning efforts, where visitor access and recreation opportunities are explored and designated. So, I'm going to go through just a brief overview of each of the four designations and the, and the management emphasis associated with each. So, up on the slides, here are the actual characteristics, goals, and criteria, kind of verbatim from the BNP. But just to summarize, they're intended to, passive recreation areas are intended to accommodate a wide variety of recreational opportunities, have a corresponding high density of trails and more infrastructure. They're generally located closer to development, and it's important to note, like, all of our management area designations, that there's often a mix of other resource values within them. So, agricultural areas emphasize sustainable agricultural operations. These areas typically include crop production, irrigated hayfields. It's more of an intensive agricultural use. Speaking again to the mix of values, an agricultural designation does not preclude trails or visitation, but the trails do tend to be more limited or designed in order to minimize agricultural and visitor complex or to enhance visitor safety in agricultural production. So, natural areas. So natural areas, they include relatively high recreational and ecological values. Um, and they're often interspersed with agricultural values as well. Uh, the main goal of these areas are to integrate these varying high-value resources um, in a way that provides high-quality visitor experience and protects the natural and agricultural resources. So these areas across our system have varying levels of visitor use and infrastructure. And habitat conservation areas represent the best areas for capturing habitat, as their name suggests. They're generally characterized by large habitat blocks in good condition and are often occupied by threatened or endangered species, or they have plant communities that are rare and unique. An HCA designation does not preclude having trails, though HCA's may contain more minimal infrastructure and trails on the agriculture's kind of in support of the ecosystem, uh, ecological systems. Um, off-trail access does require a permit in HCA's. So as of now, there are a total of approximately thirty-five thousand four hundred acres of land that have been assigned uh, management area designations. And forty-one percent of OSMP's acreage uh, is designated as HCA. And thirty percent of these acres are designated natural, twelve passive and ten agricultural. Um, and as you can see here, the designations are assigned at a, at a landscape context level, meaning there are multiple properties and relatively expensive contiguous acreage comprising each area. So currently, there are about forty properties on our system that don't have a management area designation. Um, and the focus of this project, as Dan alluded to, is just to integrate these relatively newly acquired properties into the existing management area designation context. Um, and we're doing this to, you know, keep current, get rid of our backlog. Um, and also to provide uh, the broad brush stroke guidance of MADS along with other system-wide and master plan guidance to support a future site-specific planning. And also the, it generally um, helps us with our OSN, with our operational management decisions.
Casey, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So I saw, um, looking at the map, you know, I noticed that there are areas that are designated natural that are in blue that um, that I see cattle grazing on. So is there just a crossover there?
Yeah, we, um, I think, yes, we have agriculture in all of our management area designation. So it really does provide like the, the emphasis. So uh, I'm not sure about passive, but we have it in HCA's. And when we have it like in HCA's, it's in support and it's more prescriptive and supportive of the ecosystem management. We also do have grazing and natural areas. The natural areas have um, high resource values across the board.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So um, in addition to assigning MADS, um, through this project, we're also taking a look at the open and closed status of properties. And just to provide some quick background regarding the open-close status. So upon acquisition, properties are immediately closed. Um, and then soon after acquisition, uh, the property is assessed to identify immediate or very short-term needs to integrate the property into our management. And at that time, if the property can be opened with minimal risk to sensitive resources, that's what we do. Um, and then otherwise, if there are specific resource concerns or complexities, then the property does remain closed. And so uh, for this project, we have divided uh, the forty properties into four groups. And over the next year, we'll be bringing these group by group to you all. Um, and tonight we'll be sharing uh, the recommendations uh, for this first group. And I'm going to switch a little bit uh, now to the process for, for this first group. So if the property is recommended passive, recreational, agricultural, natural area, uh, the board provides uh, feedback to staff, but a board recommendation to council is not required. And and because city council must approve all HCA designations, uh, if an HCA is being recommended, the board's recommendation to city council is required. Um, and was requested in the motion, you know, language in your packet. And um, there are also some differences among designated HCA's that I'm just going to take a quick moment to go over. So there are nine HCA's, um, all of which were established uh, in the VMP. There are four of which, however, that still need to be activated by ordinance. So what this means is that the ordinance that makes the HCA regulations, such as the no off-trail access without a permit, enforceable, has not yet been put into place. So again, while the HCA is designated, the associated regulations are not yet enforced. Um, and there are some nuances to the reasons uh, why each of these four HCA's haven't yet been activated. But in general, um, it's because the visitor master plan calls for a public planning process to determine what level of public access would be appropriate in these areas. And we have either, uh, that is either not yet occurred or we haven't, uh, that recommendation still needs to be implemented. And so the reason I took a little bit of time to go over that is because uh, there are some HCA recommendations tonight that are within the Tallgrass Prairie East, which is a not-yet-activated HCA. And so I just wanted to just share that the properties request to be designated HCA within a not-yet-activated HCA or also not-yet-activated, um, and vice versa. Any properties um, added to activated HCA's will be activated. And so now I'm going to turn things over to Juliette, who's going to go through uh, the property recommendations.
Thanks, Casey. Um, so tonight, as Casey said, I'll be sharing our staff recommendations for the first group of properties on this slide with one exception. As we mentioned in your memo, the Solomon property is still being evaluated. So that recommendation will be brought to you next year. And the recommendations I'll be sharing with you are mainly based on landscape context, um, considering the MADS of adjacent properties and the VMP criteria. Our goal is to fill these management gaps by designating MADS for these properties in a way that is consistent and compatible with the already designated MADS. We're recommending three properties be designated as HCA and six properties as natural areas. These are recommendations because these properties have similar resources and values as the adjacent properties and are aligned with the VMP criteria for these respective MADS. I'll share our reasoning for each of our recommendations in a moment. But on this map, you can see the properties we're recommending as HCA are adjacent to existing HCA's, while those being recommended as natural area are adjacent or nearby other natural areas. We're recommending that DePorter Two be designated as HCA and added to the adjacent Southern Grasslands HCA. This property has similar high natural resource values as the adjacent HCA as in, and is in alignment with the VMP HCA criteria. DePorter Two is part of a large habitat block with high biodiversity and includes part of the Coal Creek Riparian Corridor. This property is currently closed, as is the Coal Creek Riparian Corridor, as you can see outlined in black on this slide. This corridor was originally closed as part of the Coal Creek Riparian Protection and Restoration Project in nineteen ninety-nine. Then in two thousand and five, this closure was reaffirmed in the Marshall Mesa Southern Grasslands Trail Study Area Plan with guidance to maintain restricted public access here. To be consistent with this guidance and continue the protection of this corridor, we're recommending DePorter remain closed. Campbell Overlook is recommended to be added to the Tallgrass Prairie East HCA. This property has similar high res- resource values as the adjacent properties and aligns with the VMP HCA criteria because it's part of a large habitat block that includes important grasslands with unique plant communities and has high scenic value. Campbell Overlook is currently open and its natural resources haven't been impacted by visitor access. So we're recommending that it remain open. We're also recommending Loffenberger be added to the Tallgrass Prairie East HCA, but for different reasons. This property was purchased to provide a trail connection. Its main value is in its recreational potential, since minimal natural or agricultural values are within this ten-foot-wide corridor. Loffenberger's resource values aren't in alignment with the VMP criteria for HCA, but we're still recommending this designation because the planning for this property will occur within the HCA landscape context. Further exploration and determination of whether a trail connection in this area is still desirable would be considered during a future site planning process focused on the Tallgrass Prairie East HCA. If a trail connection isn't determined to still be desirable and if the property's recreational value isn't determined to be high, then disposal could be considered. And currently, Loffenberger is open and recommended to remain open.
Juliette, can I ask you a quick question? Is the adjoining land there privately owned?
Um, yes, yeah, it's private property on, on either side.
On north and south side, right, right. So we uh, just got a ten-foot-wide corridor through private property.
Correct.
Thanks.
So moving on to Shanahan Ranch, um, this property and all of the remaining properties that I'll share with you tonight were recommending as natural area. So Shanahan has similar values as adjacent properties and is consistent with the VMP criteria for natural area. It has relatively high interspersed natural, agricultural and recreational values. It includes high biodiversity grasslands that are part of the Colorado Tallgrass Prairie State Natural Area. Its agricultural resources include irrigated hayfield and pasture, native grassland pasture and other infrastructure. Shanahan also has potentially high recreational value because it's nearby a large network of OSMP-managed trails. Since its acquisition, Shanahan Ranch has been closed. This closure was intended to protect resources from potential vis- potential visitors via nearby residential areas and adjacent undesignated trails. Continued closure here is recommended to prevent expansion of undesignated trails onto this property. Further evaluation of potential recreational opportunities and the open-close status of this property would take place during a future site planning process. We're also recommending that Willie be designated as natural area, but for different reasons. Willie was acquired with the intent to create a trail connection from Marshall Road to Highway ninety-three. The Open Space Operations Center used to be located west of ninety-three and connecting to this and OSMP's trails on that side was desired. Though to safely cross Highway ninety-three would require an underpass. The feasibility and cost of an underpass hasn't been explored yet, but would likely be expensive and challenging. This property has relatively low ecological value and ongoing weed management needs. So it's not in alignment with the VMP criteria for natural area, but we are recommending this as natural area again because the planning for this property would occur within the natural area landscape context, along with the Shanahan property. Willie's currently open and recommended to remain open. A determination on whether the trail connection is still desirable and feasible would take place during a future site planning process. And this process, again, will focus on the natural area lands west of ninety-three, including the Shanahan Ranch property. If this trail connection is not determined to still be desirable and if Willie's recreational value isn't found to be high, then disposal could be considered in the future. So Lea Ranch has similar resource values as adjacent properties and is in alignment with the VMP natural criteria. It has interspersed natural and agricultural resources like the Davidson Ditch Corridor, a pond, high-quality grasslands and suitable habitat for unique and protected species. It's also suitable for grazing and includes a renovated historic home that could house an agricultural tenant. It's currently closed, but we're recommending it be open because of the surrounding properties which are open and they haven't been disturbed or impacted by any off-trail access. Stengel Two Pond is also consistent with VMP criteria for natural area and has similar resource values as the adjacent properties. It has mixed grass prairie and riparian shrublands, as well as a man-made ephemeral pond that may support northern leopard frogs. This property is currently closed, but is recommended to be open because all of the surrounding OSMP properties are open. The Doughty Draw Trail is nearby, but there's no evidence of disturbance to the pond or off-trail access from nearby trail visitor use. And finally, Matterhorn One and Two are also consistent with adjacent values and VMP natural area criteria. These properties include important mixed and tall grass communities and they're part of the large habitat block in this area that supports rare grassland plant communities and high-quality wildlife habitat. These properties are currently open, as are surrounding OSMP properties. Since visitor impacts haven't been observed on these properties, we're recommending that they remain open. So that's our presentation. We're happy to answer any clarifying questions. And the recommendations that we're proposing you make to city council are on this slide for your reference, as is the feedback. We're hoping to hear from you about the open-close status of properties and our recommended MAD of natural area for the other six properties that don't require council approval.
Great. Thank you very much for that. It's very informative and helpful. Before we go to the public comment, are there any clarifying uh, questions from the board to staff? Sure, go ahead.
So Juliette, I don't, I don't know if it's a clarifying question or just explanation from my understanding. If Stengel Two Pond were to be changed as it does its designation, I know we're not voting on that here, but I'm curious about this. If it were changed from uh, closed to open, what changes on the ground would actually take place? I, I know that pond, I go by there a lot. So I see the, you know, their fences and would they be taken down? Well, you know, what would be, what would happen?
Actually, most of that area, there's not actually a fence between the trail and the pond. So for that particular property, I don't think there, there would be too much on the ground actually changing. It would just be the designation.
Maybe I'm thinking of a different pond.
There's some water.
This is the pond that's above the trail topographically?
No.
Below it. Oh, because the one below it has a closed.
I don't think there's a fence out there.
At least there's a sign.
There's not a fence immediately like around.
Not around the pond, but on the side of the trail.
Yes.
But uh, there, but you, you can, I think, I'm not sure how long that fence goes along the trail. We were, we were thinking in the context, like, there's no fence around the immediate property and so that we wouldn't need to do anything to the immediate property.
Okay.
We haven't seen any.
So would there be any change at all, or is it just a paper change for the, to the designation of, of open?
That one would be a paper change.
Okay.
I had a question on that uh, pond as well. So it's ephemeral. Wha- what's its condition been the last few years? Has, has it dried out, uh, especially a couple of years ago? And we were um, under somewhat drought conditions? And is it currently kind of holding water or?
I can speak to, we were there in, when was it? June, May or June? And it was full of water. The picture on the slide was from June.
It was full to the end of the summer. I haven't been.
It, it will, it's some, it, it's not uncommon for it to dry out. I, I helped acquire the property, so I've been there in all seasons. So.
Yeah, I just would like to make sure that the public knows that because we, we encountered a similar situation at Sombro where the public, a lot of the public expects water to be in the marsh year-round every year. And in fact, tha- that's also in a, in a ephemeral water body. And so I think it, it would be good to make sure that people know that, you know, sometimes it will be dry and other times it will be wet.
Yeah, the fact that ephemeral conditions is really ideal for the northern leopard frog habitat.
Right. So maybe there's an interpretive opportunity there. Okay, thanks. Uh, are there any other questions, Michelle or Brady? I don't know whether, we've got Brady, but uh, Michelle?
Um, yeah, just staying at the clarifying question level. Does, does the designation or having a designation actually change the speed in which infrastructure might be built? Or is that all still depend, dependent on the site planning? Site specific, specific planning?
It's dependent on the prioritization of our site-specific planning. You're talking about recreational infrastructure in particular, Michelle?
Yeah, um, so like if something got a passive recreation area designation, would that actually somehow um, prioritize the, the build, the site planning? And then, and therefore the um, building of infrastructure?
I don't think the MAD itself influences our prioritization. It is more about what's happening kind of on the ground and others, other situations. It may, may influence us to prioritize one area over another. But the management area designation itself does not automatically lend a higher or lower prioritization um, to our site planning efforts.
Um, other clarifying question, I know Shanahan Ridge or Shan- Shanahan Ranch um, is um, slated to become a natural area. And I'm just wondering if, if you would have taken that property and moved it to East Boulder, would it have qual- just the name Ranch makes me think it would be agriculture. And if you were just to pick it up, I know it has um, tall grass in it, but pick it up and move it to East Boulder, would you have considered designating it as agriculture?
We, sure. Um, we, we definitely talked a lot about this property and its, and its varying resources. But because the, the natural area designation um, talked about the interspersal of all of these different values. So that was one of the things. It has high, you know, high natural um, resources, high agricultural resources. So that was one of the things, it has high natural resources, high agricultural resources, and a potential for high recreational. So with all of those three elements in the mix and the fact that most of our agricultural areas, the piece that is kind of the most strongly reflected with those is the fact that it might have like irrigated pastures and hayfields. And on this particular property, that's kind of in one particular area of the property, not the entirety of it. And so we kind of felt, and again, looking, zooming out to that landscape context for all of those factors, we decided that natural area made the most sense for this one.
If it were changed, I know it has very high natural resource value. So I think if we were to separate it out, Michelle, I think we would still say natural even without the landscape context.
Interesting. Thank you.
And did you want to?
Well, no, I was just going to say you asked whether it was east or southeast or would we change our mind? I think if it was surrounded and bordered all by agricultural areas, maybe there would have been some influence there from the landscape level. But yeah, because this is also included in the, into the new state natural area was also a consideration. It's in a state natural area as well.
Are there other clarifying questions for staff? We ready to move to the public comment? Let us do that, Sam.
Okay.
Is there anyone that's indicated they'd like to comment?
So we don't have anyone yet. If you would like to speak, you can click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen or participants, three dots on the bottom right, and then select raise hand. And then we don't have anyone joining by phone. And I'm not seeing any hands.
I know we're running a little early, although this item, this item was scheduled for 6:50 and that's about what time it is now. So seeing no request for public comment, I'm going to close the public comment period and return it to the board. Is there any further discussion on the item?
I think it's four hours ahead where Brady is, right?
Yes, that's correct. No, I am four hours ahead, but don't take my lack of speaking as a lack of listening.
It's good to hear your voice and know you're there. So any further discussion?
I have some questions. So public comments closed. I just have some broader questions and comments. I know that we are going like four touches and getting through most of these 40 properties this, I think this year, right? And this next cycle. And if we were to do a pro forma, thank you, by the way, for making that pie chart of what the percentage of acreage is by designation. And you all know that I asked that question over email. And so I appreciate you doing that. But if you were to do a pro forma based on sort of the trajectory of where you anticipate the designations going this year, how would those percentages change?
I don't know. We have really a projection. We really only studied this first group. As far as the other groups go, we've really just broken them out into groups. I mean, we could look at the landscape context map, which probably, you know, but once again, we do evaluate each property and it is just a little bit more than the landscape context. But that would probably be the best indication that we would have at this time. And that may or may not prove accurate, but that would be the best trajectory I have. I can pull up that map if you want to just take a quick, take a quick look at that together.
Well, I've looked at the maps. You know, I'm terrible at reading maps. And two, the colors look really close to the HCA and the passive rec. So I had to get a little bit of help to know which one was which. But yeah, I've stared at the maps a lot. I'm a quantitative person, so we could get down that path because I know you know the acres of all the properties and where they're actually headed. We could pick that up at another time. But yeah, so my comments are really around, like, you know, I understand that you can have recreation on land that's not designated passive recreation. But it does feel like we do underuse the passive recreation designation with only 12%. My guess, based on those maps, is after we get through this process, it's going to, guessing it go down from 12%, go down to 11%. And so it just seems like a small percentage of our lands that are designated for passive recreation uses, considering we are such an active community and we toot our horn about recreation here in Boulder a lot. And rightfully so. The other part about it is that, you know, we hear a lot about user conflicts and whether it be hikers, dog walkers, bikers. And, you know, when I was reading this memo, it occurred to me that, you know, we are putting a high concentration of users, recreation users, on a small subset of our property. And I do believe that to ease some of the impacts and user conflicts on our lands, dispersing that usage would be really helpful. But it is hard to do and I recognize this is like, you know, getting from an acquisition of a property to it going through the planning process and then actually opening it back up can sometimes be a couple of decades. So I'll take Shanahan Ranch as an example. In the memo, the word recreation was used three times in that very like one paragraph. So we're talking about it's a recreational value to the community. And when we bought that land, we also said, wow, the community was psyched. This is recreation, has high recreational value. But let's be like transparent and open with the community to say, yeah, it's got high recreation value, but it's probably going to be closed for a couple of decades. Now, hopefully I'm exaggerating, but based on what I've seen in most recent history, it's, it can be quite a long time before it can actually get opened. And so that's, you know, that's my concern about really wanting to disperse usage. And if we really want to do that and reduce user or perceived user conflicts, that's one way that we could go about it is to go about opening up some of this infrastructure, opening up some of this land.
Yeah, Michelle, I think that's a good point and I think staff is mindful of that. I guess that, you know, it's in a, it's in a kind of a broader conversation, you know, about trails and, you know, kind of recreational opportunities. And, and so again, from my perspective, and I'm going to step back and say, I participated actually in developing kind of this whole context. I think that originally we were looking at the more site-specific planning to address, you know, kind of site-specific issues. And dispersed recreation is certainly one of them. But, but I'm going to say with the trail backlog situation and new trails that are being proposed, yeah, I think you're right. Some of these may take a while, you know, to really get considered. And so we should be mindful of that, but also be focused on where are the areas that we can best accommodate, you know, the user opportunities. And, you know, Shanahan may be a good example. I think, you know, the closer some of these properties are to the urban area, probably the more needy the focus is on, you know, kind of what their future actually will look like.
Yeah, that's a good point, Dave, because I used to live right at that property and be able to say hello to those cows every day because they came right up to the fence. And I didn't use a lot of the trails, but from the memo, I could tell that those people who lived in that neighborhood used those trails. And, you know, they're closed now and it could be a long time before they are actually able to use them again. So it's just, just a thing. And I get that, like, we have trail maintenance backlog that we're trying to tackle. And if we add something as a priority, that means we have to de-prioritize another thing. And so having that conversation here, that conversation and just being transparent that dang, these things take a long time. And that way, like when we're talking to the community members, that we, you know, we are able to kind of walk them through this very lengthy process, even though we are touting, oh, we bought this because of its recreational value, but you won't be able to recreate it for 20 years.
That's a good point.
If you're still alive and you're still around.
Yeah, the other takeaway, I think, and Dan sent this out in an email to the board this afternoon is that, you know, a large majority of the property, the open space properties are actually open. And, you know, over three quarters of the property, you know, what, 81% or I think is what you said, is open. And, you know, from me personally, I would prefer that we have an on-trail requirement rather than just an open property or open access. And the reason is, is that in my more libertarian days, it was like I should be able to walk anywhere. But, you know, now with the population growth and the impacts of, you know, of a lot of feet on the ground, you know, I'm just not convinced that we have that luxury anymore. So my personal preference would be to focus on the trails and make sure that the community understands the need and the importance of using the trails and staying on them and recognizing, you know, the real value, the natural values that the system provides. So anyway, I just think the changes that have come, you know, more recently in the last 20 years organizations or agencies like the Open Space and Mountain Parks Department are really challenged to provide all of those opportunities with, you know, the number of people that are really, you know, expecting or expecting to enjoy the opportunities that are there.
Yeah, and I'm just going to sort of follow on with what you just said, Dave. The, for me as a new board member and a citizen, it was really interesting to see just how much crossover there is and the different uses that are available in, you know, all the different MADS. So, you know, and I first looked at it and thought, oh, Habitat Conservation Area. And then I realized, well, they're not closed. I hike in Habitat Conservation Areas all the time, you know, and in the natural areas. And it's just that there's such a big chunk of, you know, open grassland and mountain park area that OSMP has purchased over the years that they make up the majority of the actual land in the portfolio.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments before we move ahead with an action?
I did have one clarifying question. I realize I'm asking the same question that Michelle did, but maybe from the other perspective, right? I think Michelle's question was, you know, do any of them get trails built faster? But do any of the designations, you know, we're talking about making, would they cause us to build trails slower or be unable to build trails in the future?
No. Space first is true.
Yeah, the prioritization of, you know, the actions, I think, are, you know, kind of area and site-specific related. And so, and opportunistic. So if, you know, if something's happening that will contribute to a faster, you know, approach, then you take advantage of that. But I think the prioritizations are basically, you know, kind of systematic and you do the best you can with the money and the time that you have.
Yeah, there's various different reasons why an area would be prioritized. I mean, just the last few years, what we've done, Get Part, Gumbel Hill, and now Four Chambers. And the reasons, exact reasons why we prioritize is that we're a little bit different for each one. But usually it's a combination of things that are coming together that sort of say, hey, like, we need to get some management clarifications here in order to proceed. And that sort of sends it up higher in the hopper of wanting to do a site-specific plan there. There's not just like one criteria that drives everything. Four Chambers had the tribal element, for instance. Get Part had that combination of it's in a, it's in a natural area or it's in a state natural area. We wanted to do restoration. And then there's the neighborhood recreation value and all of those came together where as managers, we were in conflict of how to move forward. So that got prioritized. Gumbel Hill, there was just a proliferation of obviously a high-valued area for the community to be able to recreate on, but it was being done in a non-designated way. And so, and there was habitat value there too. So that produced a need to say, let's work with that community, do a site plan so we can put in sustainable infrastructure, meet the recreational desire, but yet be able to have a healthy grassland. So there's not always one reason why we would prioritize an area, but it's usually a combination of factors that are all coming together where we're sort of stuck from a management perspective and we need the guidance.
Awesome. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not doing anything to limit ourselves in the future from building trails or doing anything like that. Otherwise, these were very satisfying maps to look at, you know, I just wanted to color those sections in that color as I looked at it already.
This reminds me of the conversation that we had during our retreat about having a plan for plans. You know, like we did the West TSA and now like all of those things are still actually not executed on, is that right, the West TSA?
Oh, there's a handful of West TSA where, you know, we've made tremendous headway on West TSA. We're now all speed ahead on North TSA implementation that you're going to, the community will start to see in earnest this coming year and then into the next few years. So yeah, that's, but that's a good point. I don't know if you're making that point, but I will say that.
We're making progress. I mean, I think you're, like, the department's moved toward getting away from the TSAs because there are these expansive processes and being able to focus on the site-specific plans are, I think that's wise. I think, because then we can tackle these things, like we need to go through the North TSA. There are other things that we need to take on. It would be nice to just see, like, in, you know, I have two and a half years on the board. What does that look like in terms of chipping away at some of these site-specific plans? I, you know, I have no real actual ties to Shanahan anymore, but I'm just curious, like, when does that come up? You know, as even just the planning process, you know, much less the actual execution.
Yeah, I think how the board sees it right now primarily is through the budgeting process. As you'll see, there could be CIP-related items to an area. But we, staff, we can do a better job of, as we start to know, what's that year three look like? Are we going to begin in a site plan or stuff of being more communicative to the board as we start to know and understand what years three, four, five, and six looks like? But right now, I would say how you're seeing them just coming through the budget process up until this point.
Right. So we'll see CIP requests for the site planning process. And later, if we're still around, we would see the CIP requests for the actual construction.
Yeah, sometimes the CIP could include design elements because sometimes design can be expensive. So you may see several years of a CIP related to one project. And years one and two might be more design. And then three, four, and five, for instance, if it's a large project, it could be more construction. That's sort of what you saw with North Sky. What you're starting to see with Boulder Valley Ranch, North TSA implementation is you're seeing very specific implementation items show up in the budget that was related to a planning process where we're now in the implementation phase.
This is all helpful and I fully support the proposal, by the way. I thought it'd be good to get this conversation going as we had, we're going to have three more and just sort of like get grounded in what is the plan? And, you know, talk about those higher-level concerns that I had.
Yeah, Michelle, I was going to add, just listening to you and John, your comments. I think from the infrastructure, I mean, when we talk about trails and I think what I really hear you asking about is kind of this pent-up demand for recreation, infrastructure, trails, access, et cetera.
I think what I really hear you asking about is kind of this pent-up demand for recreation, infrastructure, trails, access, et cetera. And I mean, obviously, we think about that a lot and just like everything Dan, um Casey and Julia have mentioned is accurate. Um, obviously, we do uh the open house every spring where we do the trails projects where we invite the community. I think you attended last year along with several board members. That's one opportunity where if people have a request or an idea or a project in mind, we can certainly talk. They can talk with staff and we can talk with them about that. Uh, we're always seeking input, you know, from the community on what those priorities might be, um, working with several user groups, you know, and that sort of thing. Just like Dan mentioned through the budget process, I know another big topic at the recent board retreat was about the budgeting and when we have all these, you know, categories for master plan themes and, you know, what does all mean? I mean, that's one of the opportunities you all have as trustees, as board members, say, hey, you know, remember all those trails and, you know, where does that fit? And can you give us a little more flavor of what the projects are? Because Dan Dan mentioned several of them that are on the plate. But that's also a time to say, hey, can we, you know, increase some work in this area or we think this is a need that the community would like to see? I mean, that's an opportunity. You, I think you've mentioned before when your time on Prab Parks and Rec Advisory Board with that example of the Bill Bauer Park, I think you've mentioned that. I mean, that's a chance. We always tell a community, like, if you we're here to listen, if you have priorities, uh feel free to speak up and and certainly staff will take that into account. Consider those, you know, again, we have large priorities, trail maintenance backlog, like Dave mentioned, other things that are driving that, but those are clear time, like just for you to go back to the community and say, hey, here's some chances where you can speak, you can share your voice with the board and that sort of thing. So.
Some of those requests Jeff used to like land squarely in a TSA or some other plan. Let's just talk about like, we've heard a lot from the the paragliders. They want to know like what is their opportunity to ask for what they want and they, they, you know, in in a sort of formal way. And um, I don't actually know the answer to that question.
With the paragliding specifically?
Yeah, because they had asked for another landing or or launch zone and I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, that one's. I think we put it, this is, this is Brady. I think we put it on the I think we have it on the agenda for talking about on third quarter of next year. So I I think it's interesting. I mean, that process came up during our planning retreat. I think it's an interesting question that um Michelle's bringing up. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think that one we've got on our agenda and since I have the floor and it's been a little bit spotty here, I just want to say, I thought the staff presentation was really great. I thought there was a lot of uh deep consideration there. And I think what we're talking about here is uh two things. One, clarity on how we ask for how the community, either specific groups or the general public gets to ask for things. And some is what the the extent to which there is accountability and reporting back from staff when the community does ask for things and a general sense of urgency um from the board that we'd like to see. Yeah, other us as a as a um open space deliver on our commitments to the community. That being said, as I've said before, you know, I I also think that we need to do things right. And that, you know, I'll say it, I've said it last meeting, I'll keep saying it, that North Sky Trail, I think it's gonna be worth the wait. And I think the community is gonna be psyched and may really see that it was worth waiting a few years. But anyway, um, in just in case I get cut off, I I I thought the report was great and I fully support the staff recommendation. So anyway, sorry for the monologue, Michelle, but I may get cut off.
Well, thanks to all. I I think this is a an excellent discussion. It it was a good presentation uh is the foundation for that and let let me just say kind of in conclusion, before we uh go to the action part of the of the item. Um, I am very pleased that the department is moving ahead on on this. One of my concerns over the years has been as we acquire land, we really don't ever uh provide the context for what we think, you know, that land uh it the future is for that land. And I think um there's been a a real backlog, as Dan has mentioned, of uh properties that have been acquired and are kind of hanging out there in in some limbo that, you know, what exactly is the department, you know, intending to do with it? And and so I think the the more and the sooner we can kind of uh get this taken care of and clarified, uh, the better off we'll be. And and then we can come back around and start doing the site-specific um planning as well. So um, I'm real pleased that we're moving ahead and hopefully get get all of these things taken care of in the next year or so. You know, and DePorter is a good example, Michelle, that, you know, that was Marshall Mesa TSA. Um, and so we're finally getting around to um, you know, designating uh DePorter uh as part of um, you know, the Coal Creek Riparian area. And um it sometimes it just, it does take time, but I I think if we keep focused, uh we can get through this and and move on. So let me suggest uh two things. One is um let's separate out the HCA issue and I will entertain a motion uh which uh is in the packet for the recommendation to council from the board um on the council's uh consideration of approving the HCA designations. And then, yeah, just second, and then the second thing would be, uh, we'll come back around and uh talk about the other uh uh staff recommendations and just to provide uh, you know, some further guidance from the board on on those. But let's go ahead and if there is a motion uh to recommend a council, um, I will entertain that. Thank you, Harmon. Is there a second?
Well, you know, I'll read it.
Uh, I have a second. I think it the the motion has to be read into the record, though.
Yeah, please make the motion. Yes, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, getting so excited about this.
All right, well, uh, I recommend that the Open Space Board of Trustees uh recommend that the Boulder City Council approve inclusion of the DePorter Two property as part of the Southern Grasslands Habitat Conservation Area. And also further recommend that the Boulder City Council approve inclusion of the Campbell Overlook and Laufenberger properties as part of the Tall Grass Prairie East Habitat Conservation Area.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Uh, Harmon?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously and if you would prepare that and get it to the council, that would be great. Um, so the second, uh, Dan, what would you like us to do on the second part of this with the? Do you, do you think that we need to make a motion or a more informal agreement? Be satisfactory? What would you prefer?
I think, I think we were thinking uh just informal would be fine. We need to pass the motion for you.
Right.
Uh, but that's what we were initially.
So, uh, gi- given that, uh, I'm fine with that. Or is there any further discussion on uh the remaining uh designations which were for uh natural area consideration? Seeing none, um, I think staff can uh assume that that was unanimous support of the board for the staff's recommendations. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, do you need a second, Brian? Maybe the rest of us do. Brian needs five minutes.
I need five at least.
Thank you.
Uh, so Dan, I think you're you're up.
It's great. Well, we're gonna move into matters from the department and we have uh one main topic area tonight and a very important one. As you know, uh, one of our top tier master plan strategies was uh to take action on the climate crisis here now. And we've done a number of things uh uh over the last few years uh in terms of of that. And we're really excited to provide you all with an update on our climate action uh work over the past year or so. And uh, I guess no further ado, I'm gonna introduce Brian Anikar and Alicia Alexander, who will uh write us an overview of that work. I will also be hearing uh from Karen from Climate Initiatives.
Great.
Turn it over to Brian first.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, here's Alicia next to me. And Brett is running a little bit late. You should join us in a few minutes. It can be that very door. Jeff's waiting for him at the door because he can't get in without an assist from us. So the full team will be here shortly next. But here's our outline for tonight. We've got five sections. We're gonna hit, we're gonna actually tag-team these, taking turns. I'll start by laying the foundation for what climate change is looking like today globally and locally. Alicia will give you an update on some strategic enhancements we've put in place uh this year. And then I will summarize our consultant studies in item three. And then Alicia will wrap up our part to discuss next steps for climate action. And then Brett will give you an update on climate initiatives and some of their work uh after that. So as we know, global warming is a thing. It's getting warmer. We're already seeing about two degrees Fahrenheit warming on a global scale, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's significant. We always think about fossil fuel combustion as the main culprit here, but just want to recognize a second source for that and Brett will underline this as well, which is the loss of photosynthetic capacity on a global scale. All the terrestrial landmass, some estimates it's up to fifty percent, looks like that bottom photo where we no longer have green living cover. Plants, of course, are nat- natural photosynthetic carbon scrubbers. They pull CO2 out of the atmosphere, break that down and store the carbon in their tissues, their roots, and then gets incorporated into soils. And that's a good carbon storage bank and an important part of stabilizing climate worldwide. But with this loss of photosynthesis, it's a real issue. And that's why as land managers, this is such an interesting topic for us because we do both of those things. We uh work and make emissions, but we also manage land and try to keep a living cover on the land. Heat is one thing. The impacts for natural disasters are also extreme and wide-ranging. We talked about wildfire extensively last month. As well as fire, we've got flood and droughts. And then migration of people, entire communities, plants, animals. Everybody's on the move, trying to get away from these disasters and heat stress. Unfortunately, if we were to stop our emissions today, we'd still be looking at thirty more years of continued warming because CO2 molecules long-lived, about fifty years lifespan, forty, fifty years. Uh, this revegetation and loss of photosynthetic cover is not gonna get reversed overnight. So we gotta kind of buckle in and prepare to adapt. At the same time, we're trying to stabilize climate by controlling our emissions. Locally, what does temperature increase look like? Well, fortunately, we have a weather station that's been deployed in Boulder since nineteen hundred. This graph is showing a time series going to twenty twenty-three. Where the bars are the number of days where we saw ninety degrees or greater temperature, ninety degrees being threshold in which we really start to say to each other, hey, it's really hot. It's really annoyingly hot today. That black line represents the trend, which is about three weeks more of hot days than we used to have in nineteen hundred. And then that curved line shows that it's not a simple linear pattern. In fact, it's pretty episodic. Where in the nineteen thirties, we had a lot of hot conditions, the Dust Bowl. Uh, the nineteen fifties, we actually had a lot of prolonged and severe droughts. And then we get into the two thousands and it really starts to heat up and get into this nine alarm situation where we get heat wave after heat wave. And you can see that last bar is twenty twenty-three and we kind of talk about this here. It's like, hey, it was a pretty good weather year. There's still a lot of hot days and that came on the back of three other years that were super hot. Hopefully, we're gonna cool down again, but the trend clearly is towards increasing heat and heat stress. Our disaster profile is increasing. Uh, we've got the Calhoun Fire, the Marshall Fire, the flood, which maybe sounds a little less connected to warming, but about a year after the flood, we had a paper come out in Nature attributing the flood in part to global warming. So these connections are not always obvious, but they're there and we're seeing more local impacts. So when we look for guidance as a city, we start by looking to Brett and his team, Jonathan Cohen, the director of Climate Initiatives. And they've got three different areas they go to work on. Energy Systems, that's working with Excel on the grid, kind of big picture, thinking about where energy comes from and kind of greening that. Nature-based Climate Solutions is the closest overlap with our department, working with nature to find ways to stabilize local climates and add resilience for fire, flood and drought. And then Circular Economy is really thinking about using less reusing materials, trying to close the loop so that we keep uh the extraction of new materials from resources at a minimum. Then they also are in charge of setting some of these metrics for us, which are super ambitious and we're a leader in terms of putting these numbers out as and having these timelines as aggressive as they are. Twenty thirty, which is a short seven years away, we're to have seventy percent emissions reduction. Net zero, just five years after that, that's where we're balancing our outs and our ins. And then carbon positive, which is actually drawing down more carbon than we're emitting by twenty forty. We have our own master plan. Dan alluded to it, some really ambitious language in our outcome statement, EHRC, which asks us to be leaders in taking climate action as a department. And then, as Dan mentioned, the number one priority for strategic enhancement for twenty twenty-three was climate action and wildland fire programming. Welcome, Brett.
Hi, Brett.
We've already introduced you. And uh in it, in that language, we referenced these two consultant projects, which were linked to you in the packet and we'll summarize those here today. After the master plan, we took a look at a single year's work plan. We have over three hundred projects in there. We linked each and every project to climate, either as a direct indirect or north connection, just to kind of see what kind of foundation we're sitting on in terms of climate work ahead of putting a focused uh amount of enhancement time and energy into it. And depending how we do that analysis, we're looking at about forty to sixty percent of the work that we do day in and day out can be considered climate work. So it represents a strong foundation. These are projects like land acquisitions to protect our land, a lot of the enhancements we've had around healthy soils, the fuel and fuel reduction fire mitigation work we talked about last time, some of our building energy projects to reduce our carbon footprint. And a lot of the themes in our education outreach program are all climate action. So we're sitting on a really strong footprint and Alicia will now talk to you a little bit about what kind of accelerations we're looking at making on top of that.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for having us here today and happy holidays, everybody. Um, so yeah, let's let's now take a look at some of the things that we've been doing under the lens of strategic enhancements. And first off, uh, as many of us know, a key recommendation for organizations and agencies uh in pursuing climate action is to assign individuals or a work group essentially dedicate and focus on that climate action. And we were fortunate enough to be able to do that. Just this year, um, we implemented the recommendation um that we create a new group within Open Space, within the department, um, the Science and Climate Resiliency Work Group, or SCR, as we like to call it. And SCR covers three integrative topics from science um with our senior ecologist Anne to climate and myself, uh, lucky enough to focus on that specifically and then Wildland Fire Program with Paul. And I want to mention that, uh, you know, we're not the lone leaders in this. There are experts across the department in uh all of these topics. And um, we have just, you know, lots of um important people and uh key information to kind of lean on with that. Um, one thing that we're focusing on is being able to make those connections and collaborations and integrate what people are doing to really kind of focus the work that's happening and bringing those strategic enhancements um into play. So just starting off in twenty twenty-three or just this past year, um, we, let's take a look at some of the activities we were able to get done uh or focus on. Um, some of these were low-hanging fruits or things that we were able to pilot and some of these were oh, uh, and a chance to bolster or accelerate, for example, electrifying our fleet and our equipment, uh, focusing a couple of research projects specifically that were climate-related as well as um getting uh some landscape. getting some landscape, nature based solution pilot projects underway. And then even having a dedicated seasonal within our work group that was brand new as well this year, that that person specifically was able to help with the climate research projects. And then also being fortunate enough to assess and look at the maintenance of the solar that we already have on our system. And getting a much needed energy audit on our buildings and finishing that up just this year as well. So one thing, again, as I mentioned, that we really need to lean on the expertise within our department is just the staff within. And so just this year, this is just a list of some of the folks that we've either consulted with directly or have already started working with on these various projects. And one one other aspect of that is the partnership piece, whereas with city climate initiatives, you know, within our very own, you know, city as a whole, they've, they're doing so many camp programs and, and projects that Brett will explain more. But we get a chance, for example, in the picture on the left, we get to see maybe how we integrate with them about CoolBoulder. Or for our partners in the county, the Oscar Office, Office of Sustainability, Climate Action and Resilience. We get to see about their recent campaign and, and see how we integrate with them with their electrify everything. The bottom right is also a county effort. So these bottom two photos are landscape focused, specifically bio woody biomass management. And so the one on the right is scoping and demonstrating taking woody biomass and turning it into biochar. And then on the one on the left is actually a working with a private organization called Boulder Mushroom and doing fungal inoculation on woodchips. So woodchipping the woody biomass and inoculating it with fungal spores. So very cool work. That's already has a lot of momentum just this year. But as another recommendation or key thing for agencies and work groups to be working on when they're heading into climate action is to take inventory. What is your base? What is your data tell you? And so we, again, we were lucky enough to focus on a lot of our work this year alone with consultants. And so on the left, you'll see our main, one of our main ones was operational work. And so the greenhouse gas inventory. And that was through Lotus. We went through that consultant because it's actually the same one that the City of Boulder Climate Initiatives Department uses. And so that, that allows us to match methods and compare a little bit more apples to apples that way. And then the other side of that being the land inventory or our carbon, figuring out our carbon stock, carbon flux and nature based solutions. And this one specifically also had climate initiatives Brett himself actually helped manage and co-fund this project. Biohabitats in this project also had an advisory team that included staff from Boulder County as well, Open Space, the Nature Conservancy and CU Boulder. So a lot of, of really great people working on these projects. With that, we were able to, actually just within the last month or so, so fresh, hot off the press, we were able to synthesize the, these deliverables into something that's a little bit more digestible and put that into a summarized story map. Now you all, as the board, you do have access to this. These are the links that were in the memo within the packet. All right, with that, back to Brian.
Okay, so section three, I'm going to do a lightning round update of what's in those lengthy reports. Just the hits. The Lotus Report.
Some of us looked at those.
My apologies, boring you with this. You're already expert at. If you're like me, hearing it a second time will be good. We looked at our carbon footprint from operations to start us off. And for 2018, we use that as a year for our baseline because that's what the city of Boulder also use. We also like it because it's pre pandemic. We also pulled a pandemic year 2021. So we'll show you that. See it on the screen. And across these areas, we're looking at about 3,711 tons of carbon dioxide equivalent emitted by O S and P through our operations in the calendar year 2018. And so again, we can partition that among procurement, transportation, building, energy, consumption, waste and refrigerants largely is that last one, which is above their weight. Procurement is the big one. It's everything we buy and the emissions that come with that. We're looking at things like wood, metal, tools, any contractor work to do, landscape level, construction projects. Those have big emissions price tags that come along with the dollar price tags. The second biggest is transportation at 595. That includes the driving around of our fleet. By switching over to EV, that number is going to start to come down. It also includes employee commute. So we figured out where everybody lives and how far they drive, how many times they come in, whether they carpool. Put that number in there as well to give us 595. And building energy at 271. So for that pandemic comparison in 21, you see we dropped about 100 tons of carbon dioxide, which, when we dug into that, it became immediately clear that was from telework. So employee commute went down with the exception of field staff and central workers. The rest of us were at home full time. Likewise, our building occupancy went down. So our building energy use went down accordingly. So when we look at this again, it's possible those numbers will start to come back up. Right. So now I'm going to put that number, 3,711 from our operations in context with some other sources of emissions each year that we have. Because we're a land management agency and we have a big recreation component to our system. We have a bunch of other things to look at. So this arrow sits kind of in the northeast part of this photo to represent our operational hub where we stage out of where we're sitting now. And the rest of the arrows will kind of be placed geographically. And then the top of the arrow just ends in the sky to represent CO2 going out into the atmosphere and becoming part of the problem. So there's our 3,711. Then the next item we looked at was visitor travel. You know, we have over six million visits depending on the year. We took a look based on our visitation data and our survey data. We put that together, working with HD staff to determine where the origins of those trips are, where the destinations are, whether they're on trip or not, what kind of vehicles they're bringing, gas, diesel, electric, what their occupancy rates look like in those vehicles. Are they single passenger? Are they carpooling? And then just did the math in terms of how many emissions come with that miles traveled, which is 32 million miles traveled. It's kind of a big number. And the emissions that go with that is about 15,000 tons of additional CO2 or about five times everything we do as a departmental operation. Why is our visitors are doing just through business as usual, traveling to access points. This next arrow, we kind of put in a grassland context to show cattle grazing. We worked with staff to come up with a headcount of 1,800 animals and given their emissions related to their waste, that's about 3,000 additional tons of CO2. That's an interesting one because there's ecological benefits, of course, for grazing. That's why we use cattle. And there's even some studies that show there actually a net benefit for carbon drawdown in the way that the benefits that they give you in a grassland context, create that system that's extra healthy, favor native diversity, greater carbon cycling, so forth and so on. But just based on the raw emissions coming out of the animals, 3,000 tons. And then forestry, we've, we heard about last time through fuel reduction, take down a lot of trees, plenty of supply predominantly bulls, branches. Those materials either get processed onsite and shipped, or they get put into largely into the community firewood program and burned in fireplaces. So our initial estimate is based on the 700 wet tons of material, the emissions if that all got burned in a conventional fireplace, another 4,500 tons of CO2 up in smoke. Next, only a few more. Bear with me. If we had 100 acre wildfire in the forested context, the smoke emissions from that would be about 4,000 tons. We don't always have a fire of that size. Sometimes we have no fires. Sometimes they're grassland. So that depends. And then lastly, we looked at wind blown erosion. We picked on prairie dog colonies because we had field based empirical estimates based on store deals and Tim C. Sted's work that showed how much soil was moving based on their traps. So we used that, converted into CO2 equivalents and said, okay, for an average sized prairie dog colony of 100 acres on a high wind day, how much CO2 are we looking at? And it turned out to be about 30 tons. So that number obviously would scale up if you had a lot of windy days and you multiplied it out by a lot of colonies or a lot of other degraded land. That's our initial estimate. Put all that together, maybe that's 30,000 tons in a given year. And that is one way to think about our total carbon footprint, but you can choose how you want to describe your carbon footprint, but maybe that's our maximal footprint. So then we asked, well, what are our plants doing for us across our land system? Are they drawing down enough carbon to sort of offset that? And even if they aren't, just what is the magnitude of that drawdown we're getting? And our first estimate at that is around 12,700 tons of carbon getting fixed, pulled out of the atmosphere by plants, put into their biomass and eventually hopefully getting incorporated into more stable sources in the soil. That's in an average weather year during a dry and drought year. That number goes way down to 2,000 tons of drawdown. These are all estimates. There are a lot of error bar around these, but just for sake of comparison, we can say now there's no way that's keeping up with the 30,000 tons that O S and P may or may not be responsible for, depending on how you draw those lines. And the last comparison is what is the city, the Boulder community emissions as a whole? This is taking all the activities that happen in Boulder, everything you buy, every trip you take, every construction project, every piece of energy you pull out of the outlet, so forth and so on. That's 1.5 million tons of CO2 every year. So our 30,000 tons is a bit of a drop in the bucket in that grand scheme, plus our drawdown of 12,000 tons is a bit of a drop in the bucket. We were a little discouraged by this, but the theme we kind of come back to is every ton matters. Every molecule is long lived, like we talked about. And this shouldn't be a get out of jail free card. We still have responsibility here. And if we can reduce our emissions by one ton, it's worth doing. That ton can cost in terms of economic damages somewhere between $200 to $400 in damage. And if you multiply that up by 30, it's a, it's a big price tag. And we just want to do our best to minimize our contribution to that and help stabilize climate. Sam's moving around whisper. We're good, Sam?
Yes, sorry about that.
So then next we look, that's all flux. What about stock? What's in the standing vegetation and below ground in our soil? Across about 36,000 acres, we found about 2.7 million tons of carbon is locked up in vegetation and soils. Soil itself is about three times greater than the biomass storage. And that soil is only measured to one meter depth. We could go deeper than that and that size of the pool would grow accordingly until you hit that rock. So it's a big pool, 2.7 million tons. Community emissions at 1.5 per year effectively burned through the entirety of Boulder carbon stock, which is kind of a mind blowing comparison to make. That's not to say we shouldn't do everything we can to protect this. We already said we need that photosynthetic cover. It's a big part of stabilizing local climates. And our emphasis then is that we want to take care of what we have and keep our ecosystems intact to protect this carbon stock. Yes, let's accelerate carbon drawdown where we can. We're not optimistic that we're going to be able to double our photosynthetic drawdown. Even if we did, it would still be a small amount compared to this huge stock. This huge stock, if you build it out at that rate of, what was it on the last slide? 12,000. It would take millennia to build a carbon bank of 2.7 million years, but we can lose it overnight if we're not careful stewards. Okay, carbon is the theme. We've been talking about that a lot. But carbon, and Brett has helped us see this more clearly than anybody else, is an indicator that we should think about alongside all of the other indicators we use to be good land stewards. Like biodiversity and water. And in some ways, these other metrics are better for us to focus on because they change faster. Carbon is a slow indicator. It's slow to change, especially in soils. Water changes hour to hour, day to night, week to week, season to season. Biodiversity, we know is critical to us and we are spending a lot of time and energy monitoring and protecting that. The good news is that carbon is correlated with all these things. Where you have wet habitats, you have rich organic soils that are carbon rich. That's also where biodiversity tends to stack up. So by managing for biodiversity or for water and some of these other services, we should get that co-benefit carbon storage by asking the carbon question specifically. Sometimes we can make adjustments that will give us more carbon benefit than we might have otherwise, or get us to emphasize some of these other correlated predictors like water. And then nature based solutions is the last thing I'll talk about, which are any technique that you use, working with nature to add resilience to a system. And climate resilience sounds like a good idea, but what are we actually talking about? It means a system with standing fire, flood and drought. In my opinion, that's the easiest way to think about it. Next, so that'll be, we are here. This is our foundation I alluded to. We don't, we haven't called these nature based solutions, but in my opinion, they are. And they represent really good work that we're doing to have resilience benefits and carbon benefits. We talked about fuel reduction and forestry by avoiding these emissions that go with catastrophic fires. That's climate action. When we do 100 acre restoration project at Lower Boulder Creek to reclaim gravel pits and turn back into wetland habitat, that's slowing floodwater. That's giving us resilience against drought and should be considered a nature based solution that adds climate resilience. When we go to the Bennett project and look at the degraded land and there's some novel tilling techniques and some different seeding to try to bring living cover back to that system. We're preventing those wind erosion events, keeping carbon locked in the ground, bringing plants back in place to be that engine to fix carbon back in the land. That's drought resilience and that's nature based solutions. The question that Alicia and I and others are starting to ask is, can we do that faster? Because the climate emergency is at times. Can we do it in more places? And then what adjustments can we make to do it more effectively? If we focus on things like water retention and carbon buildup and drawdown. Last thing I'll say is we mentioned ZDex structures. So that's our foundation, but we're also looking at some other novel techniques. We talked about biochar. These are ZDx structures that rock dam you see on the left. We worked with Brett and his team and well then restoration volunteers to put the Sanic Gregory Canyon this year alongside a more conventional approach, the check dam on the right. They're both trying to do the same thing, which is slow floodwaters as they rip down these drainages and spread that water out. Help it to get absorb it in the landscape, green up those areas, build up carbon storage, then erosion downstream. So that's a novel technique that's getting popularized in our region. And we wanted to see what it might look like to try to fit it into the Boulder landscape. And through much mess and machinations, we were able to make this one happen. And without a turn over to Alicia.
Great. So this will be our last section. That's O S and P focused. And then we'll hand it over to Brett with an update from Climate Initiatives, as we mentioned here on the bottom. So how do we bring this all together? That was a lot. And it might've seemed like very disparate things, right? So if you take a look, kind of our general, general or you know, overall outcome is increased climate resiliency or resilience. And we have three objectives or kind of three buckets or categories that we realized things kept going into or falling into. And they spaced out nicely this way, which is user, use nature based solutions, reduce emissions and accelerate the climate action. So here's just a little bit of a sneak peek of potential strategies that came out of everything we've already talked about, right? Consultant work, all of the collaboration with experts internally as far as externally too. So you see nine up there. There's three under nature based solutions. There's a few that we've mentioned already under operations and a couple under climate action, just to kind of give you a quick sense of that. And then I want to mention that And then I want to mention that, for example, the one here on the, the middle right, uh, create a set of climate BMPs for project scoping. Um, we are finding lots of really interesting connections, including um, racial equity instruments. Um, and tools that the department or that the city has already uh, been doing a fantastic job on. So there's already precedent on creating kind of these BMPs or a lens to, to uh, look at projects and fu- future programs through. And so um, perhaps we can kind of parallel that, that work in the future. All right, so to wrap it up and perhaps from a chronological standpoint, as we've mentioned, we initially looked at the city of Boulder's climate action plan, our own master plan for guidance. We did our own work plan analysis. Uh, we've been piloting projects. We've been working with consultants to get suggested and curated strategies. Which then created almost 100 strategies, potential strategies for us to work on. So yeah, where do you go from there? What, which ones will actually get us to that better, further, faster? Uh, situation? How do we get to that 2030 goal, that 2035 goal? Um, and so just recently, um, our department came together and we had, I think, over 65 staff go through workshops to help prioritize uh, this strategy list and that was immensely helpful. And then going on from there, you know, the continuation of coordination and accelerating current efforts and bolstering future projects. Um, the strategy list and the prioritization, the plan is to turn that into a uh, six year, so starting next year, right? 2024 to 2030, six year plan to help guide and keep the department on track. Um, and so that would be our implementation plan moving forward to accelerate our work. And a final uh, thing to help with perspective, again, um, these numbers, some of them seem daunting, some of them seem very little. But back to that, every ton matters. Um, this is a great thing to, an important lens that we need to keep referring to as we move forward. That will bake into our, our guidance is a prioritization criteria. Uh, the idea that we really need to prioritize or focus on what is within our control and our direct control. So for example, as we've mentioned, that's our operational emissions at over 3,000. And that, for example, a huge lever that we can pull on that that creates a larger impact is electrifying our fleet. As one example, um, but then there's also the, everything that, that may fall into the circle of influence, what we may be very concerned about, we may be able to influence, collaborate on. But we may not have direct control over. And for example, visitor emissions may fall into that. And so further discussion and, and further work will need to go into that. And then finally concern, um, and the example of that may be um, where the Boulder community emissions lie. Um, so again, not our direct control, but we're heavily concerned about it. And how do we? How do we still help within that, knowing that the city and uh, folks within the climate initiative department are hugely focusing on that, um, specifically with large companies like Excel and working on renewal, renewable energy and so on and so forth. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Brett.
Good evening, uh, Open Space Board Trustees. And I want to also express a greeting from our director Jonathan Cohen, who otherwise would be here tonight, except the board that we staff, the Environmental Advisory Board also meets tonight. So I'm here to represent um, both our department and our work. I'm going to start um, but with a very abbreviated conversation about something that we can talk much more about, which is, I think, some significant changes that we are starting to see emerge around our understanding of climate change in general. And what I would just, in a very cursory way, summarize to say. The recognition that we have dramatically underestimated the role that the living world plays in climate stabilization. We've turned the climate problem solely into this discussion about carbon and carbon management. And then therefore for 20 plus years, climate action was entirely about energy systems change. And what we're starting to realize now is that that's actually only one part of the problem and therefore only one part of the solution. I also just want to say to start off that this has been a transformation that's been taking place in the climate field broadly. In the city organization, our work was entirely focused on energy systems change for 15 years. It's just been the last few years that we've recognized the importance of ecosystems, that we've created a nature based climate solutions team. And I'm excited to say that the first department that has come forward beyond the sort of us nudging to say, hey, we really need to look at climate and our role in climate was open space and mountain parks. And so it was exciting for us to see that evolution, both external to us and even internal to us. And that I feel like your department has really led the larger city in showing what it looks like when a department steps forward and say, hey, we, we need to understand our role in this process. So I'm just going to say a few things about this paradigm of climate change, climate action. This is the classic sort of smoking gun discussion about what has caused climate change. The pink line is atmospheric CO2. Which we all know from the many, many different ways that's just been reported, that has been climbing. And it has climbed quite dramatically since the industrial revolution. And so that, that blue line is actually the emissions from fossil fuels and burning fossil fuels. And therefore we'd said, oh, obviously those two things are the, the, the burning of fossil fuels is what's caused climate change. What has been under recognized, however, is the recognition that we have been simultaneously degrading living systems at this same escalating pace. And in fact, this piece that has come out, and I'm just going to move through this slide very quickly. This is obviously the many, many different ways that we have been degrading landscapes from agriculture to forestry to, to a way we've managed grazing. But this, this paper that came out by Sanderman and others in 2017 was this sort of landmark uh, analysis that showed that over a third of the excess CO2 that's in the atmosphere did not come from burning fossil fuels. It came from landing degradation. It came from essentially decarbonizing the living world. And so when you start to look at these two things in relationship, this is the classic causation slide, but in fact, when you actually put that uh, the, the decarbonization of living systems next to it, you see, oh, actually this, this way we have been living in the, in the larger living world is actually a fundamental cause. And it's then not, not so surprising that this, this analysis that OSMP really pioneered, and I want to also emphasize this analysis that OSMP did of our 40,000 acres of public lands. And the dynamics of carbon in this landscape is a truly pioneering piece of research. Uh, there are very few places that have tried to actually look at that, this, in this way. I also want to commend Brian in particular. This was a very complex analysis with a lot of very smart people using a lot of very abstract and conceptual tools. Half the time Brian was just trying to reel them back in and bring them back to reality. But I think that one of the really important findings, I genuinely believe this is a finding that is relevant globally is to say that in many of these landscapes, the question is not how much more carbon we can take in. It's how we can, we avoid releasing the carbon that we have. And that's sort of illustrated by this recognition of what's been causing climate change also. And as we know, this is a problem that is accelerating because of climate change in our, in our landscapes. This is last May or this past May where, and we saw once again these dust storms, which as the analysis is showing, it's moving a lot of carbon out of our landscapes. So I also just want to give you a, a sort of preview of coming attractions in a way. We've been working over the past year to develop new tools that will enable us to provide quantitative projections of how climate change will be impacting our locale. I, I would note it just as a sort of introduction to this, in 2014, the Western Water Assessment came out with the Colorado Climate Change Report and they did a very interesting, I think, very useful thing and trying to, to convey what the, the um, the future might look like. And they said Boulder's future based on these different potential scenarios of climate change means that our climate will look like something between Lamar, Colorado and Albuquerque, New Mexico. And frankly, on the trajectory that we're currently on globally, it's more like Albuquerque, New Mexico. So this, this recent set of tools that we built that actually start to take those global models and downscale them so that we could see what are the levels of change that we're likely to look at? Start to illustrate these kinds of changes. So this, this analysis, which will soon be making available to the other departments in the city are showing us what will the days over 95 look like? How many of them? In this case, we're seeing our historic was about five. That's why we didn't have or didn't need air conditioning in Boulder for years and years. Now by 2030, that's going to be three times that amount. How about extreme precipitation or extreme weather events doubling? How about number of high fire days? Well, on average it was 12. Now it's already 118. Right now it's probably going to be around 200. High fire days by 2030. So we're living into a very, very different future than the one that we have been in. And one of the other things that this is changing is how we think about what our local government responsibility is in the context of climate action. When climate change was this abstract thing that might happen, it was all about this carbon discussion about GHEs, which of course is the worst way to try to describe something. You can't see it or apprehend it with any of your sentences, senses. But now it's actually about something very real. Climate change is happening to us now in all kinds of ways. And what's the first and most important responsibility of local government? It's the health, safety and welfare of our communities. Therefore, our first responsibility is the resilience of our community to these changes. And that's why the health of our landscapes is such a critical part now of our climate action, because resilience is at one of the cores of what we as a city have to do. So one of the things that we're doing, and it's actually building on this, I think landmark work that OSMP did is partnering with you and with the county and others to launch an initiative to look at what the climate risk and resilience dynamics are of the landscapes that surround our community. So we're, we're, we've been with Brian and many others, working over the past six months to scope what we're calling a desertification risk and resilience analysis for the northern Boulder Valley area. As a way to see, can we develop tools that give us this remote sensing capability, seeing landscapes in almost real time? To see if and when they start to move into these lands condition changes that might become hard to reverse. And then if we can do that, if we can literally see these landscapes in real time and those kinds of changes. Can we actually use that to develop a new set of management incentives for land managers? Especially around water. And this is something that Brian was talking about. Carbon is a lagging indicator of land condition and, and dynamics. Water is the leading indicator. If we can manage these landscapes to hold and cycle water, they will create all kinds of different benefits, which managing carbon alone will not achieve. So we're really excited to be doing this. We just released a request for quotes. By January, we'll be putting out a request for bids for this work. And over the course of 2024, develop hopefully this new set of tools that will enable us to do a bunch of things. So we're going to do this uh, with the, the conservation district land boundaries as a part of our analysis areas. Partly because we think it's really important to make this analysis relevant to both public and private landholders and managers. Okay, I'm going to just end by talking a little bit about the work we're doing to sort of bridge the very important work that you've been doing for years and years around the health of landscapes. Into the work that we're now carrying out in the urban landscape side. So just as you've been pioneering this way of engaging our communities in land health on the natural and working lands. We're now through what we're calling the Cool Boulder Initiative. Mobilizing our community to start to see our urban landscapes as a part of that process as well. So over the past year, we have created a network of over 40 community partners. This is just some of them that have become partners. And we've been, in fact, I was just at our annual um, end of year event for this. We've, we've had literally thousands of people involved in projects from pollinator habitat to tree planting to now starting to work on rainwater capturing and harvesting. We've been working together, planting thousands and thousands of trees and starting to put these pollinator habitats in. Changing people's perceptions of landscape, removing turf, all kinds of really fun and exciting things. And I think one of the things that's really encouraging, and you know this from the work that you've been doing. There is such a passion, not just in our community, but now, you know, growing since across the country for engaging with the living world. Because I think in this time where it's so frightening in many ways, we start to realize the living world has full, is full of kind of capacity and hope and inspiration. So we have three major areas that we've called out. Uh, resilient, I'm sorry, absorbent landscapes, uh, connected canopies and pollinator pathways. I'll just very quickly end by saying we have pretty ambitious targets in 2024 in all three of these areas. The connected canopies, we're going to be starting with three different school neighborhood combinations this year. Uh, Fairview and its surrounding neighborhood, BCSIS and its surrounding neighborhood, Crestview and its surrounding neighborhood. Planting at least 200 to 300 trees in each area, building a youth um, summer watering program for those trees that we're planting. So sort of, we're going to try to build on the great experience that you've been doing with the uh, junior rangers and create kind of an urban analog to that. Uh, in the uh, pollinator pathways area. Really landmark piece of work, by the way, that's just about to be published, that came out of last legislative session. Calling for a new state pollinator protection framework. So there's some really exciting new resources coming forward around that. We're applying a lot of those in the community. And then finally, we're starting to really recognize that um, in addition to using water from the west slope, we actually ought to be using the water that falls on us in every of these kind of precipitation events. So we're really starting to look at how we bring more of that water back into our landscapes in lots of different ways. And in doing things like the Island Restoration Volunteers projects that Brian talked about. Okay, I'm going to end there, but thank you very, very much for this time that I could participate with you. And again, for the partnership of this terrific department and organization.
Right.
So much information, not enough time.
None of us have enough time.
I know, I know. That was just like the top of the iceberg. All right, um, so I want to, we want to open it up now to the board for some Q and A and specifically uh, we have a couple's questions for you all that we'd love um, some input on. And they're a little bit more community. The first one is more community focused. So um, if you have your thoughts on how would you approach reducing visitor emissions without increasing ecological impacts? So something to ponder on and, and let us know. And then the other one, or an equity barrier, sorry. Um, and the arrows are back up there just to remind us the, the amounts. So there's the full question. And then the second one being, are there any particular topics or potential strategies you want us to come back to you on? Um, to hear further about in the future? And then of course, any other questions or discussions?
So thank you very much. Uh, that was a I will say an inspiring presentation and uh, we definitely appreciate it. And especially the work, Brian, that uh, you and the group are doing. Uh, it is Brett said is uh, is really impressive. Um, so thank you very much for that. So does the board have any questions or comments or would like to uh, speak to the questions on the screen?
John? Sure, I'm, I'm happy to. Thank you for that presentation. It was really great. Uh, you know, climate impacts and global warming can be such a like you know, big and nebulous and hard to, you know, grasp topic, but I really enjoyed reading this report. As Dave said, some of us would, did go and read them. Uh, it, uh, thinking about it at the local level like this, especially in the way you all captured it, it really made it tangible and like easy to understand uh, in a way that, you know. I don't think I've even gropped it before in the past. So uh, you know, aw, awesome work on that in terms of making it so accessible. Um, and easy to read. You know, in, in terms of particular topics or potential strategies we want to learn more about, the question I was going to ask is, you know, what? What were your favorite things that you all learned, you know, in this study or most interesting things? Uh, you know, that, that you kind of didn't expect to find um, in the research?
You can start.
I, I would love to learn more about that. At, at least in a quick uh, summary tonight, but you know, in the, in the future, more detail.
Yeah, um, so much. We knew so little when we started out. I remember last time we talked to the board, I said, we need to get some experts in, but we don't even know how to start the conversation in this tricky inner interface. Um, I think it's the relative magnitudes of these things, probably that image with all the arrows, just trying to wrap your brain around the relative ins and outs of it was a real uh, epiphany that we would have 2.7 million tons and then we only bring down 12,000, but we're emitting 30. Just to start to put some numbers to these abstract concepts. Um, and then probably the biggest surprise was just the scale of the community emissions relative to everything else. So the idea that the city can go through, if you think of it like a burn rate in two years. Burning as much material as, as in all of our system is kind of unbelievable to me. And maybe was not uh, I, I kind of suspected like there was going to be a little bit of a limit in terms of what we could do with our nature natural and working lands. Um, in terms of like stabilizing climate. But that really just resonated and like, oh wow, it's really somewhat limiting. And then probably the other big surprise is just getting to work with Brett throughout that project and every time is pivoting us like, okay, carbon is one thing, but let's talk about the other thing. Which is keeping a living cover on the land, focusing on ecosystem benefits like water. You know, water, water, water. And I'm like, yeah, it's starting to sink in. So while we're like just running to catch up to this whole carbon fields, we're at the same time trying to pivot and think about what that means in terms of a semi-arid climate, inheriting the Albuquerque climate. And already getting all of our water from west slope. So integrating the carbon into the water dynamics. Kind of the grand challenge now that I think we've got our bridge up and carbon story.
When I, when I think about water, and I know we'll probably go down the line, but I wanted to immediately respond to you, Brian. When I think about water on a landscape scale, you know, this is rain, this is snow. We're not watering, we're not sprinkling the O S M P. So how do we make the water stick around? Is it native plants that do a better job or they're exotics that, you know, what, what are we looking at to try to get more water to stay here?
Start and then maybe see what you want to add. It's probably a mistake to think that all landscapes should be wetter, just to start with that. You know, a lot of our grasslands are high and dry and they're evolved to be that way. And we don't want to irrigate those. But irrigation, that's the same way, is something we do a lot of in our working lands. And so that's one place to look at ditch irrigation is really efficient way to move water. We get a lot of ecological benefits from that leaky ditch infrastructure at the same time. So it's not as clean as putting it in a pipe and bury the pipe. But maybe different cultivars that use less water in air cultural context. And then looking in those wetland and riparian zones and fixing some of those damaged areas where we have major bank incision and when water does come, it just flows fast and aggressively through there. As I saw on the flood, it's just we can't hold back a weather event at that scale, but there's much smaller ones where we're getting flash flooding route border that we could do a lot better at. Another part of that is post fire, we've seen to the north. When you get those hydrophobic soils, if you happen to get a water precipitation event after that, then you really have a problem. And California has seen that with events of less semen. That's what fire flood combo is a real killer. So getting ready to deploy some techniques right after fire to most of those areas to capture that water and get those soils functioning again. Or build some of these check dams and heat act structures to, we know where the water is likely going to go. So get in front of that and be prepared for it to intercept it and spread it out laterally.
Please.
No, go ahead.
Well, again, there's a, a longer conversation that would be fun to have about what I think we're starting to see emerge as we recognize that water cycles, both big and small are perhaps as or more powerful in stabilization and management of climate than carbon cycles. And that we can literally start managing local climate dynamics by how much water we're holding in larger landscapes because of the transport of cooling power of those landscapes. And then of course, through transpiration, you're seeding literally the water that's falling to the downwind of you. And that we literally need to be thinking about regeneration at these landscape scales to, we have, you know, for every one degree temperature increase, you have seven percent more moisture in the atmosphere. We're literally sucking our landscapes dry as we want to plant. So we have to literally not just capture carbon back, we have to capture water back. And so we need to be thinking about the hydrological systems in our local areas much differently. Is it really the most useful thing to be growing hay with a lot of water? Could we be using that water for other things? Those are the kinds of questions that I think we're going to have to start asking if we want to hydrate these landscapes. It's also quite interesting to see that we're just so accustomed to historic landscape and dynamic that we sort of don't think much about things that they're doing in New Mexico, for example, like Z D I C structures came out of New Mexico because they're ahead of us in what they're seeing. We've had a hard time kind of introducing some of these systems here when in fact, we think we should be doing a lot more of them as we start to prepare for a landscape and a climate that's going to be more like theirs than what we have. So I think there's a lot of learning to, that we ought to be looking south and into other places that have already been experiencing this ahead of us.
Brian, thanks for contextualizing that and actualizing that for me. I understand everything you said. But also Brett, that, that's really inspiring because when we asked this question, you know, how does Boulder deal with an international, you know, worldwide, uh, you know, you know, global ecosystem wide problem? The, the notion that we could be, you know, seeding clouds, which, you know, will create rain in eastern Colorado or in Nebraska, you know, says that we can have wider region based impact, you know, regional impacts to our policies. These aren't just, you know, rich people trying to do good in this little bubble. You know, this has a national or a regional impact. And I mean, I've got an uncle out in Nebraska who owns a bunch of pivots. And he gets a, he's a country boy, but he's got a cell phone. And when the price of energy goes down, the electrical cooperative tells him so that he knows I can start pumping. Cause you know, he's sucking the Ogallala aquifer into those pivots. And the biggest cost to him is electricity. So he gets a couple more inches of rain a year. That's even better than the co-op sending him when the price is cheap. You know what I mean? So it really has a big regional impacts and that's neat. And that inspires me more than, I mean, a lot of the things Brian said made me want to go home and shoot myself. But that, um, you know, that's.
Way to go, Brian.
You know, that big arrow, the, the big arrow, Brian, with the one and a half million tons, that one really wanted me to die. But, but the idea of having, you know, some kind of regional impact for the good is the way I'm not going to go home and do that.
We could be Weld County's best friend.
Yeah, yeah.
Literally, because it's our transpiration that's feeding there.
I get it. Thank you.
I'm going to say that mine isn't necessarily what's come out of the report is, and it's a little bit of just bringing on the folks that I may honor to work with is that we had this, Brian and I sort of others had this about it. Let's form the special program area of science of kind of resilience. That was fourteen months ago.
And look at the work just that's come out is fire last month and all this work, that was a matter of one year.
Then this team has sort of put the heads together and, and look what's come out of it. Yeah, some of it's depressing, we knew that. Some of it's unknown, some of it is guess limit, some of it is using best knowledge today that might not be the best knowledge ten years from now. But the fact that, you know, a government agency can put a couple program area and within twelve months, start producing work like this is, I mean, that's awesome.
Thank you. Other questions and comments? Brady, I don't know if you're still there, but you may have a perspective.
I think Brady dropped a little while ago.
Okay, all right, then forget it. Brett, what I wanted to ask you is, you know, and I hate to dump the proverbial water on the conversation, but you know, what bothers me is that Boulder in the east slope, Front Range actually is de-watering the Colorado River Basin. And so when we talk about water and water use, it seems like it's a, you know, kind of going on what Harmon said, it's a really parochial focus and that the, the focus is on the Northern European climate that most of us have genetically inherited. So it's the green grass and trees, and that's the concern I have. Are we really promoting natural landscapes in the urban environment? I'm concerned about the fact that we're planting trees in a semi-arid environment that's going to require that we continue to use an inordinate amount of water in order to maintain those particular ecosystems. And shouldn't be, we be encouraging, you know, more natural semi-arid landscaping and kind of trying to, uh, use what, you know, we talk about in New Mexico, you know, kind of what, what actually is the environment that, that we're anticipating? So I'm concerned about that, that it seems like we're looking, we're still focused on a Northern European scenario in a semi-arid environment that's becoming more arid.
I think it's a great critique in if what we were doing was just creating more really exotic novel ecosystem. I mean, urban landscapes are novel ecosystems. And I mean, one thing we should remember is that humans live in them. And that the number one risk in climate change is heat. It's by far and away the biggest risk and the biggest health threat. And that if we want to protect our communities from those kinds of heat related deaths and illnesses, we're going to have to try to keep them as cool as possible. So how do we do that both inside and outside? One of the things that's happening that is going to change that Northern European aesthetic is that the water providers are recognizing they can't keep supporting lawns. Denver Water has already committed to removing thirty percent of the turf in its service territory. And so the state legislature just last year passed a turf removal bill. And so there's a whole bunch more resources going into that. So we're working with Resource Central, there's a whole series of biodiversity, pollinator garden, lawn replacement initiatives. But one of the things we found is that actually in the analysis, trees over those kind of native plant environments use less water than that turf related landscape. So we can have shade and more diverse biodiverse landscapes and use less water. And that's, I think, that balance that we're going to have to try to find, unless we don't want to live here anymore. I mean, we could make it really a barren and more native like grassland type, but we probably wouldn't want to stay here.
Well, we ought to be looking, and I'm sure, I know we are, but we ought to be looking at those communities historically that have lived in semi-arid environments and okay, how have they survived there? And it seems to me that we ought to be kind of transposing, you know, what, what we've learned historically on what it requires for communities to survive and theoretically thrive in, in those kind of more rigorous environments.
So we've had, I don't know if you know Brad Lancaster's work, he's from Tucson. He's one of the pioneers in rainwater harvest systems in those, I mean, his landscape, it's eight inches of rain a year. And you don't, you don't mound your plantings, you basin your plantings. And so we're actually pioneering basin systems in Boulder this coming year to start getting at how do we water more and more of our landscapes with just the water we get from the sky?
Right.
Not from the addition water. And these, by the way, climate change for the landscape architects.
Right, thanks. Uh, other comments or suggestions? Michelle, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I'll jump in on this first question about like approaching reducing visitor emissions without equity barriers. I mean, obviously alternative modes of transportation would be really important to us. But I think at the same time, we, we ought to try using more carrots versus sticks. That addresses the equity issue because like, you know, we can institute really, you know, huge parking fees to deter people from, from, you know, driving. And I mean, I've seen people show up at Chautauqua, they're all going running together and they all drove separate cars. And of course, you know, there's not crazy parking and they're, you know, and they've all driven their cars and they're just about to go running. But you know, at the same time, we, you know, like, let's, let's get creative about, you know, providing more carrots. BVSD has a program called trip trackers and, and kids get these, um, these bucks to use at Sweet Cow and played again sports for every, you know, trip that they take via bike or bus or a multifamily carpooling. And also I'd like to see us as a department be creative. We, you know, people are, I know biking to the trailheads and leaving their bikes there. If there's a way to like feed into what motivates people to do that, some of it, they need to put it on Instagram and be acknowledged for having done that. And maybe that's a thing. And I'm not on Instagram, but, but that is kind of a thing for people or, you know, whatever that is. Like just get creative about how we can encourage people to, to do the right thing. And of course ourselves do the right thing. So I say that for visitors, but I also say that we could do that for our, our city staff. Um, I know a lot of city staff don't live within the city limits and, and, you know, driving is important. But I have worked at, um, at, at places that provided us incentives to, for every mile that we bike to work, we got a dollar to spend at Patagonia. You know, there's just, I think, different ways that we can, we could try to do that here within our own community and use more carrots and sticks.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to close the conversation in relationship to a whole other discussion that we had at the board retreat. And that was budgeting and work planning and that those high level guidance things that end up feeding down to very specific projects we do. And the board's desire to get a little bit more involved at that strategic level. We talked about obviously tier one master plan strategies is an area we've been informing you heavily about. But then we also brought up this notion that internally we've had what we've called these strategic enhancements. And that usually comes out of the director's team is that, you know, how can we move the needle on a couple of things? What is right in front of us right now that, yeah, we have master plan guidance of all this, but what do we want to do a little bit of extra of and really incentivize our staff to go to work? And that is the kind of the notion of the strategic enhancement. There's just a few every year. We can't, you know, they, they would, they would end up losing their weight, if you will, if you had too many. But this was one example. And so we wanted to bring you this today, uh, ahead of the strategic enhancements conversation in January, because this is the type of dialogue we can have is like, when we sort of say, we want, we're going to charge our staff with a strategic enhancement area. Like this is, this is sort of a result you get. And then that ends up showing up on light items and with the budget and light items and the work plan. So kind of keep that in mind next month when we daylight, you know, some of the work we did in 2023 on our strategic enhancements. And also what, what are our 2024 ones? And as a way to sort of build our dialogue going forward on budget and work planning and high level guidance that could then, uh, staff can take and make it happen at the ground level.
You know, when, when I asked Brian to make it real, you know, what are the, the things that we can do on O S M P property? Cause we're not just going to sprinkle the whole forty six thousand acres, you know? And you gave some great examples, like one of them is the restoration of riparian areas, right? So channelized creeks aren't spreading water and they're not, you know, moistening whole valleys. And, and so the, the program that you guys took us to for, uh, for the combined Posack field trip, when we got to see one of those projects in reality, does, does this kind of work sort of push some of those projects up the scale of things that, you know, O S M P is more interested in, in putting real C I P dollars into, real capital money into? Because we know that they can have some of the biggest climate impacts.
Well, we've always appreciated restoration projects from solely the ecological benefit. So the diversity of species, which will always be, you know, the bread and butter of putting our thumbs up. But now that we're understanding that there's a climate benefit in addition to that. I mean, I would say that over that 10 year period, that should translate into wanting to do more of those projects.
And do them differently in some cases. We didn't talk about this, but Lower Boulder Creek, there's a huge amount of emissions related to making that project happen in terms of the vehicles and miles traveled by the contractor and machinery on site. Taking that same lens at our trailheads about the maintenance materials choices. So even if we do that same project in the same timeline, we can just be asking questions a little bit differently about can we tweak this, tweak that? And same with the Z D I C is like, maybe we try this other novel technique. So it can be little adjustments that make big differences. But yeah, I think down the line, it's, can we do four more of those faster than we were planning to do? Well, sure, it'd be, you know, here's the cost for that. Now we can say, here's the carbon water benefit and having those like we just said, as a lens, you know, what about climate? What are the 10 questions you should ask for every project? What about equity? We're kind of seeing it in that way.
And I wonder if it'll change procurement, you know, you think about what kind of companies we hire. Like you're going to, you're going to do a thinning project, so they go out there with fifteen gas chainsaws and a barrel of unleaded to fill those things up when they run dry. What about, you know, contractor finds out Boulder doesn't want to hire people like that anymore? So suddenly there are contractors who unfurl, you know, half an acre of solar panels and plug in, you know, thirty two chargers with giant forty volt batteries for their, you know, this guy finishes up with his chainsaw battery, he comes running back to the solar panel, plugs in a new one, goes back out. You know, maybe we can make companies start rethinking how they do projects like that. If we're only going to hire the ones who think that way.
Yeah, discussions are very started. Yeah, staff, staff are supportive for sure.
And green concrete is a good example of that too, where it's early days, they don't actually, they're not quite ready to supply. Costs are, but if we were to band together enough work, they said, we'll up, we'll upregulate if you are guaranteed that you're used for our product. So there's even like some partnering with producers like that. So there's even like some partnering with producers like that. And then, yeah, green procurement in general is a major topic that we want to get.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, they're exciting prospects in a rather dismal environment.
Harmon's not going to shoot himself.
Don't do that quite yet, Harmon. But we appreciate it and.
Brian redeemed himself.
Well, we'll look forward to, uh, further conversations, that's for sure. Thanks again.
Thanks Brett for joining us.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Um, our last, uh, director update is, I just want to turn, oh yeah.
Can I, uh, is, is she still on? Can we do, can we do the public comment?
Oh yeah, we, uh, we had a raised hand during public comment that recognized, so we want to go back to that, Dave.
Can we, before you finish up, if she's still there?
Yes, we do have someone still with their hand raised.
Well, then I'm going to open, uh, public comment up again and we will hear the comment.
Okay, um, so we do have one hand raised, Lynn Siegel. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Where's the timer?
And we're getting the timer up right now. I apologize. We'll, we'll just wait just one moment to get that going.
Sorry.
Sorry. No, that's also my fault for going quickly on that. Have the timer up in just a moment.
She, by the way, Dave Kuntz is Lynn Siegel. You know me very well. You came to my house to see me once, remember? You don't have to call me she, I'm Lynn.
We start this time, it's not shown.
See if it's working.
There's, it's just, it's just pausing, I can't turn.
Apologies, we're just having a technical issue with the timer. It should come back in a minute.
I just see a circle with five minutes in it.
I wonder if I, um.
After I came for open comment here at six ten and was denied open comment, I went to Landmarks Board at six fifteen. And due to technical issues, I didn't testify until, till six twenty-seven. So wherever I go, I'm a jinx. Sorry about that.
Two minute timer.
Thanks, solutions.
Um, I made the name.
Lynn, why don't you go ahead and, uh, we'll keep track of the time on this end.
Okay, there we go. With all due respect, Harmon Zuckerman, I'm Jewish too. I love Israel, but Israel is committing the crime of the century. And all of this talk about water and soil sequestration of carbon. All of it is to no point if we are blasted to the stone age like Gaza is. And guess what? Two million people, they're going to come at us. The whole world is coming at us because we're supporting Israel and I love Israel. That's why they need to be stopped in their tracks. Long ago, seventy-five years this has been going on. And I follow these nine boards, but for the last thirty, thirty-five years, I've studied this issue. The West Bank, Gaza, everything, the open air prison. I know enough to know better. I have an interest in survival. I have an interest in Boulder surviving. And there's no point in having these meetings at OSBT and E A B and Landmarks Board like tonight. If we're all blasted to holy hell, and we will be. If we don't get a nuclear event from Iran, China has condemned Israel, everyone else. We're, we're going to have attacks on U S territory. And then you're really going to feel the true empathy with the people in Gaza. This has got to stop and it's got to stop now and it's got to stop with, guess what? Open Space Board of Trustees making a recommendation of advice to the city council for the sake of the open space and the use of it. Because you know, Gaza's demolished. It's been demolished. And not only has it been demoed, I said tonight, it should be landmarked. Not only has it been demoed, the people have been demoed. That is so not okay. They are so mad and they are going to come after us here in Boulder. So we need to do something because I want to survive and I want Boulder to survive. Cause I'm not going to survive if Boulder gets blasted in this conflagration. That's why it's an OSBT issue now, tonight, here. All these things you're talking about are great. The water, you know, it's fabulous what Brett was bringing up. All of it, but it's all for naught if we don't even exist. So think about it.
Appreciate your forbearance. Uh, Dan, you can have the last word.
Okay, well, I'm actually not going to have the last word because my last word, I'm turning things over to Heather. As you all know, we have a community event, uh, next Monday night. Just want to remind everybody, uh, that we're going to be talking about prairie dog management. Uh, looking back at twenty twenty-three, looking ahead at twenty twenty-four. And Heather, you wouldn't mind just reminding the board of, uh, what's to come on Monday night?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, so as you know, um, each year we hold an annual community update meeting um, for prairie dog management and we've been doing that since, um, twenty twenty. That was one of the strategies called out in the, um, prairie dog working group recommendations. So we began that in twenty twenty. And so again, this year, um, we'll have a similar format to what we've done the other years that we've held the meeting. Um, we've widely, um, communicated with the community about the meeting. We've sent out, um, an email to our stakeholders list, which is a, an email list that's been, um, collected through, um, the last ten years or so of prairie dog, um, issues with any community members that have been interested in engaging in that. Um, so emails went out to that group. We also this year did, um, reach out to nine hundred adjacent neighbors with postcards, letting them know not only about the, the prairie dog stakeholder email list, if they would like to subscribe to that for future, um, notifications, but also about the public meetings. So, um, we're anticipating probably pretty good attendance this year, given that really wide outreach ahead of time. So, um, back on January fourth, I believe, so Monday, um, we posted, um, the full presentations for the meeting online, so people can review those ahead of time if they'd like to. Or if they're unavailable to go to the meeting, those are available to them. Um, we found that that's really useful because we have a large amount of information to communicate. And so at the actual meeting itself, we will do somewhat abbreviated presentations of the same information that's online, really focusing on the, the critical points and then referencing those longer presentations that include more background information, more stage setting, that, that type of thing. Um, and so the, the meeting currently is scheduled from six to seven thirty next Monday, December eleventh. Um, there is a Zoom link that Sam has helped us set up. It'll be a very similar format to, um, sort of the board meetings that you see. Although, um, I believe in this one, um, questions get typed into the chat rather than, um, asked out loud, which allows, um, me as the moderator to sort of, we usually get a very large number of questions. So group similar questions, not ask duplicate questions, um, just kind of do that. So, um, we will have, uh, presentation by Tori Polton on the relocations and the monitoring and population status of the prairie dogs and some of the conservation and prairie dog working group work going on. Andy Pelster will talk about the prairie dog removals in twenty-three and what's planned for twenty-four. And then, um, Eric Fairley will talk about the agricultural restoration program. Um, I will, this year, I don't usually give a, an actual presentation, but I will go through the changes that we discussed with you all a couple of months ago. Um, and then the ones that went to city council so that we're, so that the, the community knows the, the shifts that we've made in the prairie dog and irrigated lands, um, management program. So that's kind of the plan for the presentations. Um, I'm putting together the agenda now and looking at the times, but we should have some time for questions after each presentation, specific to that presentation. And then some time at the end, um, either to circle back to questions that didn't get, get answered or to, you know, questions on sort of anything that people would like to ask about. In past years, we have actually gotten through all of the questions in that period of time. Again, if we have much higher attendance, that may not be the case. So we collect all those questions and whether they're answered verbally at the meeting or not, we prepare written answers to each and every one and then post that on the website, um, a, a few weeks after the meeting. So everybody will get a written answer to their question, even if we run out of time the night of the meeting. We then have a week's period where we collect feedback from the community on our, um, proposed management plans for next year, for twenty twenty-four, as well as any additional questions that they might have come up with after the meeting that they didn't ask then. Um, and then again, provide, um, responses to all of those. Reevaluate our plans for next year based on the feedback that we get. And then in February, we'll be coming to you to talk about, um, what our plans for twenty-four are, what we heard from the community. Um, and kind of go through that. I, I think this year that will be, for those of you who were on the board last year, a far more abbreviated presentation than it was last year. Because last year we were really starting a lot of the stage setting and background for the conversations that we had throughout this year. And since we, we don't have plans to be doing anything like that this year, it's just going to be our actual implementation management. Um, this will be far more focused on that and less on kind of the, um, longer history and foundations of prairie dog management on open space. So that will be in February and then we will follow that up with an information packet to city council. So those are the plans right now. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions on it.
Uh, any questions for Heather on the meeting? Thank you very much, uh, Heather. We're looking forward to it and, um, I'm sure we'll have some questions at the meeting. So thank you.
Excellent. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Heather. Great. I think staff is done for the night.
Great. Meeting of December sixth is now adjourned.